With liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Ninkie? Yeah, I think we will. Do we have any? We don't have any outside now. Someone want to address the housing authority? Oh, come on. Okay. Counselor Ninkie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar and that we move item 4A to... Well, I see. It would... That wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. I would move that we move item 4A to this point in the agenda as a reorder of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could just say, we're having technical problems with the phone. We're going to go try another phone and then Counselor Tesler will be available at the meeting.
Okay, we are going to move to item 4A, a special order of business. It's a management report. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, pleased to be here tonight. Andy Welch, Housing Administrator for the City of Salem Housing Authority. Excuse me. Tonight, I'm going to provide a status report on Parkway West, Parkway East, and Robert Lindsay Tower. These three projects are progressing quickly, which is great for us. And soon, within 30 days, moving into the construction cycle for closing. The information report in front of you, I'm going to follow that fairly closely with the PowerPoint, a brief PowerPoint. There are also three attachments to your information report that I may refer to briefly, but it's not a substantive part of my presentation. With Commission direction, staff has evaluated all housing owned and managed by S.H.A. to identify the projects that have the greatest financial need. The Commission authorized and directed staff to do that work starting in 2010. The priority from Commission, after that analysis of our owned and managed housing, was to focus on Parkway West, I'm sorry, Parkway Village and Robert Lindsay Tower. Parkway Village is a 124-unit family project with almost 400 residents, with half of those residents being children. Almost 25% are disabled. Average income of a resident in Parkway Village is about $18,000. Property was built in 1995 and has been experiencing physical deterioration in repair for some time. Robert Lindsay Tower on the right, the tower, 62-unit senior project built in 1974. It's HUD-funded. It's a public housing tower. And HUD provides funds to maintain and repair the property. There's an increasing level of repairs and a decreasing funding stream from HUD. In 2010, when staff was evaluating the properties, there were three key elements to Parkway and Robert Lindsay Tower. They both needed structural repair. They both needed additional financing to address that structural repair. And the properties were performing marginally and, in some cases, not performing well at all. Parkway has increasing systems failing, failing siding, windows, decks, onsite stormwater, storm management issues, dry rot. RLT has seismic upgrades, heating and cooling system issues, need for repiping water. Reserves at Parkway West, HUD financing for Robert Lindsay Tower are inadequate to address funded repairs. The need to engage additional financial resources became apparent, and that was the Commission direction to staff. Since 2010, the Commission has authorized several different actions for staff to take, generally related around applying for financing to fund renovations. In addition, the Commission has authorized staff to create new ownership entities that would bring all the financing parts together in order to undertake renovation and refinance. Parkway Village has also been partitioned at the Commission direction into Parkway West and East. Parkway East and Robert Lindsay Tower subsequently have been bundled together in a scattered site project in order to gain greater financing efficiencies. The Commission has authorized the conversion of the Robert Lindsay Tower into a project-based rental assistance through the Rad Program, Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. Rental Assistance Demonstration converts the RLT from public housing to a guaranteed 20-year contract. It offers greater predictability for the Robert Lindsay Tower over that 20-year period. It allows the Robert Lindsay Tower to avoid, to avoid competing for federal funds in the annual appropriations process in Washington, D.C. 20-year contracts are guaranteed with additional incremental increases from year to year. We worked with the Commission to develop a broad and comprehensive strategy. And Commission directed staff to apply for, and we've just recently found out that the Rental Assistance Demonstration has been approved by HUD for closing. The scope of work that we've been working to identify for the Commission as it relates to renovations for Parkway Village and Robert Lindsay Tower, what they have in common is deferred maintenance, windows, doors, siding, a range of repairs that are not normal course repairs, but repairs that take substantial construction methodology, substantial design, and substantial general contractor capacity. The current status of the two projects. Earlier, I mentioned the Commission authorizing the formation of two new ownership entities. One ownership entity is Parkway West Limited Liability Company. The other ownership entity is Robert Lindsay Tower Housing Limited Liability Company, LLC. You'll see that the 46 units of Parkway that was partitioned off is now bundled together with the Robert Lindsay Tower. That 108-unit project, once again, gives us some greater efficiencies and economies of scale for our financing. Parkway West, 78 units, it is a tax credit project. Our partners that we solicited, that the Commission reviewed and authorized in October, November, and December, are partners for construction financing, permanent financing, tax credit investment. Enterprise is the tax credit investor. Chase is the construction lender. NOAA, Network for Oregon Affordable Housing, is the permanent lender. We also solicited funds from Oregon Housing Community Services, which we've received. And of course, the soft money that these projects have to have in order to be successful, substantial amount from the City of Salem Community Development Block grant. Robert Lindsay Tower Housing LLC has the same funding sources and funding partners, except you'll notice that at the very bottom, the HUD Rental Assistance Demonstration. So that's the difference in the structure of these two projects. So these are the finance partners, Enterprise, Chase, NOAA. In the report, we've provided some primary terms of the terms and conditions that these investors and lenders will ask for in order to bring their financing to the project. Commitment letters from the lenders and investors are not finalized, but will be available and ready to go on the 28th of April. A primary condition of lender and investor conditions is to fund the project is financial and performance guarantees that S.H.A. will be asked to make. The key terms and obligations, as I mentioned before, most of the key terms in these commitment letters that will be before you in two weeks are the same key terms and conditions that were set forth in the letters of interest that the Commission authorized the Executive Director to sign this past fall. These performance guarantees essentially require S.H.A. to complete construction of both projects, Parkway West and Robert Lindsay Tower Parkway East, within a stipulated timeframe and successfully operate the project both during and after construction up to the end of the initial 15-year tax credit period. So we have obligations for that full 15-year period. S.H.A. has several layers of risk management in place to meet these performance standards. First and foremost, S.H.A. has hired a highly competent, experienced team to design, finance, construct, and effectively execute projects. The team specializes in successfully completing projects like Parkway West and Robert Lindsay Tower. In addition, S.H.A. has ongoing success in operating affordable housing projects, both on the property management side as well as the compliance reporting and auditing side. These obligations with our lenders and investors are consistent with obligations S.H.A. has assumed on five other occasions over the past 15 years when S.H.A. was the developer, co-developer of other tax credit new construction and renovation projects. To highlight a couple of the guarantees, construction completion guarantee, that would be if construction isn't completed, have to pay back the construction loan. S.H.A. and the contractor and our consultants have exhaustively gone through all bids, estimates, subbids, performed substantial value engineering, access specialists in several areas for scope and estimating. We feel very confident on the schedule and numbers. In addition to that, we have real dollars backstopping construction performance. We've got a 10% construction contingency, a 5% to 7% soft cost contingency. And then, of course, for any lender or investor, they would look to a developer fee as the additional backstop for construction completion. The second primary obligation we would have would be operating deficit. Any operating deficits during construction, after construction for five years, Salem Housing Authority would be obligated to make good on and cover the costs associated with operations. To manage that, there will be six months of reserve deposits set aside out of cash at closing. A substantial amount, given S.H.A., will be setting aside funds for operations, replacement reserves after construction as well. And of course, once again, if there were any deficits, then those deficits likely would be paid for out of developer fees that the contract or the funder, the lender would withhold. Tax credit delivery. S.H.A. has an obligation to deliver tax credits in 2014 and 2015, and really through the 15-year period. S.H.A. has negotiated conservative assumption of credit delivery in 2014, about half of what a full-year credit delivery would be. We've built this into our construction schedule. We've built this into our staging and tested it with our relocation and various movement on our properties and feel confident that this 2014 credit delivery is an appropriate level. Repurchase guarantees, the fourth and final one I'd like to mention. If at any time during the 15 years, S.H.A., the project failed, essentially to become an operating and affordable and viable project, S.H.A. would have obligations to repurchase and basically repurchase and pay back the amount of tax credit equity that was invested. For instance, if the project fails to certify all units for tax credits by September 1st of 2015, that would be a type of condition. Or if the project fails to achieve permanent loan conversion after construction. Or the project does not operate at break even financially for three consecutive months in a row within 18 months of construction completion. It's unlikely that these events would come. But if they did, then it would likely require sale of this property and assets, and potentially other assets. I want to reiterate that S.H.A.'s hired a very competent, experienced team to design, finance, construct, and effectively execute projects like this. S.H.A.'s successful management experience with tax credits and, together with financial and accounting consultants guiding the tax issues and tax credit reporting functions, will ensure completion of all operating and reporting aspects. So for April 28th, Commission meeting, we will be bringing two primary resolutions. One is to issue tax-exempt bonds for Parkway East and Robert Lindsay Tower as a part of the, as a companion piece to the 4% tax credits. And secondly, authority to sign documents and close the financing to begin renovation. This would include additional authority for the Executive Director to sign documents that may not be in final form on the 28th. But the executive, also provide the Executive Director with authority to act within the parameters of the commitment letters from the lenders and investors. And all commitment letters will be available on the 28th as a part of the Commission's deliberation. The last thing I want to mention is the action item that's on tonight's agenda for approving the Executive Director to execute the HUD commitment letter for Rad. That's a, that will be the only outstanding commitment letter that will be going before you, before the 28th.
Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate all of your assurances, but I would want to mention we will want to hear about this regularly as this progresses. There's quite a bit on the line here, so, okay. Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Welch. A question on the permanent financing for both projects through Chase and through NOAA. They're an adjustable rate on the interest on them based on LIBOR or the 10-year Treasury constant maturity yield. I'm not an economist. I don't have a crystal ball to tell what's going to happen with those. At what level of those rates do we break even? And at what level do we go into the red? I'm, I'm just curious. I don't know if you know the numbers off the top of your head, but maybe we could know at that point, just so we can kind of understand. Because, you know, if we hit a volatile economy in the next couple of years, I don't know what the changes are and how quickly they can change. And that definitely concerns me because that's not something we can control. And I want to make sure we don't, at least we hedge our bet on that.
So one of our financial and consultants, Philip Doco, from Housing Development Center, is here. He's really structuring the finance primarily, several other things, but primarily structuring finance for us. And so I'll let him answer.
Okay.
So first of all, in regards to your question about the variable rate for the construction loan from Chase, it is 225 basis points, or 2 and 1/4% over 30-day LIBOR. 30-day LIBOR has been at about .16%, .18% for almost two years now. Very little variability in that. And so we have figured in an escalator on the 30-day LIBOR for the next 18 months so that we can withstand a fluctuation up to about .6% on the LIBOR. Just as a, as a contingency for that. The permanent loan has, has a rate that's fixed to the 10-year Treasury maturities, but it also has a 6% floor rate, which at this point is about, I think, 3/4 of a point above the indexed rate. In addition to that, we are receiving another lender's tax credit from the State of Oregon, which is actually writing down that 6% interest rate to somewhere around 3.8% or 4% for the entire project. So it's really a very favorable rate, both on the construction side as well as the permanent side.
Yeah, that's great. One follow-up on that. Is there a cap on that? I mean, I know the 10-year Treasuries, if we do hit inflation, the 10-year Treasury is going to go up real fast.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mention that the rate is actually fixed at the time that we sign the commitment letter.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's 2.5.
On the permanent side.
So it's 2.75% above the 10-year Treasury at the time we sign it?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Good. That takes away a whole lot of the uncertainty for me, so, thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. You have a question about, because it looks like we're getting ready, once this all goes through, we're getting ready to start construction. What's going to happen to the residents? I'm especially concerned about the Robert Lindsay Tower residents because they're mostly senior and disabled people.
It's a great question, and I can say that they're all thrilled, the Robert Lindsay Tower residents, for having renovations and looking forward to that. We have relocation plans for all three components. One for Parkway West, that's unique to Parkway West. One for Parkway East, which is unique to that. And then, of course, the, the Robert Lindsay Tower with seniors is extremely unique to them. We expect at a maximum that the residents of Robert Lindsay Tower will be out of their units for four weeks. We have a substantial budget that's built into, for all three relocation costs, that's built into those respective project budgets. And we are, a lot of the seniors will be going with family. Those that aren't likely out to the residence inn, in a short-term stay, I think we call it. And they'll have the room paid for and their per diem, if appropriate. They have kitchenettes out there. We've talked with the residents for months about that. They seem to be fine with that. So they'll have nice, safe, available residential facilities to live in. And I might add that the way the construction of Robert Lindsay Tower is going to happen, it's going to be in stacks. And so there are seven stacks, 11th, 10th floor down to first floor, seven stacks going vertically. And one stack at a time will be vacant units that are being repaired. And so most of the seniors will be in the building for the duration. But everybody will be out for close to a month, could be less.
Just a follow-up, thanks. That, that helps. I'm curious to know about, especially the Robert Lindsay Tower. They're going out to residents, and I think that's out on Hawthorne, out near Costco. So what will they have for transportation? Because in town, they're, you know, they're close to things. Out there, it's just Costco, so.
So for relocation, we have to basically ensure that they have the same act, the same abilities to do what they did in their own units. So we'll be paying for transportation for them and, and ensuring that they're not, all, you know. Most of the residents that aren't going with family will be out there. So they'll still have some community and some familiarity. But we'll be covering their expenses to get from here to there and the places they need to go.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernhardt?
Thank you. I have two questions, actually. I'll start with the first one. I just hope you can explain what LIBOR is. I understand it, but it's why did you use it and why is it there? And what does it stand for?
London International Bank of something.
It's lending rate.
It's an international index for lending.
And so why is LIBOR used rather than?
It's, it's just an index that's typically used for, by construction lenders for loan at this time.
Okay. I just want to make sure people know what that, we throw acronyms out there all the time and they just kind of get lost in things. My real question had to do with, help me understand that the company structure of all three entities, the Robert Lindsay Tower, Parkway West, and Parkway East, they're all LLCs at this time. So somewhere along the way, you've said that there was going to be somewhere between a 4% to 9% tax credit on each one of these loans that were going to be coming through. I presume that, who's, who's the owner of those three LLCs at this point?
So the owner will be a partnership between the investor member and the Housing Authority of the City of Salem. The investor member is, will be in the project for at least 10 years, at which point the Housing Authority has a right of first refusal and an option to purchase the investor member's interest in the project for the greater fair market value or the amount of outstanding debt plus any taxes that may accrue to the investor member upon their exit. So in the, in the majority of cases, the outstanding debt on the project is greater or about the same as the value of the project, and the investor steps out for a nominal amount of money, usually just their transaction costs to document their exit.
So the entity that receives that 4% to 9% tax credit is going to be the investor then that goes into this thing? Because if you're a nonprofit on the other side with Salem Housing Authority, you can't use these credits.
Right. They receive the, the tax benefits of the federal housing tax credit.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All righty. Thank you very much. Commissioner Ninkie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that was an information item only so that...
So that we could make a decision.
Maneuver us back to consent calendar. And I would move consent calendar as provided.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Oops. Did you have anything you wanted to say about your management report?
I do not unless somebody would like me to.
That's okay.
That's, I think, a record. I think that was the longest Housing Authority meeting we've ever had.
It was. It was. It was really interesting, too. I hope it's not as exotic as it sounded.
In all candor, it's pretty normal.
Okay.
It really is.
Okay.
And there isn't a construction loan anywhere that's not going to, a construction lender that's going to demand that... that's going to demand that we do this, that anybody do the same things that we're doing. I think we've got a really good parameter around it for this meeting.
Okay. We have no further business. The housing authority is adjourned. Call the Urban Renewal Agency for the city of Salem for April 14th. Order, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler? Absent. Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benares?
Here.
Board Member Clem? Absent. And Chair Peterson? Absent.
Did we, do we have Tesler there now?
We're just trying, so if we could just have maybe a minute to try to get around the phone.
This'll just take a second.
Do you want me to just sing an interlude, or?
Why don't we, no. Why don't we, not to cut you off, but why don't we go ahead, Counselor Nanki, with the consent.
Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
And the consent calendar is two sets a minute.
And purchases approved administratively.
And that's just about it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. No further business for the Urban Renewal Agency, which is adjourned. It'll take a minute to get Counselor Tesler on the phone.
Hi, Counselor. This is the council tables. Putting you on speakerphone. Thank you.
Called order, meeting of the city council of Salem for April 14th. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Clausen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benares?
Here.
Counselor Clem? Absent. And Mayor Peterson? Absent.
Counselor Nanki, do we have additions or deletions? Did you have a yellow sheet?
No, but I do have an addition or deletion or modification thereof. I would move item 10.2C to occur at the end of public comment prior to the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And this is now time for the council to have comments, if you all have any comments. Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that last week on Thursday, I went to an event honoring the island people of the island of Rongelap, who their island was tested with a nuclear bomb in 1954. In 1984, many of them moved here to Salem, so they were finally exiled from their island. So it was a 30-year anniversary of them being here in Salem. They're actually a Marshall East community, so you know, we have a lot of, we have a fairly large Marshall East population in Salem. That's part of the reason why, is because they had to leave, some of them had to leave their island. And so they had their 30th event here, also a 60th event, because it was the 60th year since their island was, had the nuclear testing on it. So I just wanted to just kind of bring awareness to that because they are, we have a lot of them in our community, and they're, and they are interested in making sure people know, you know, why they're here and what happened. So if you have an opportunity to look it up, kind of do a little history and do a little Googling and see, check out their island, they're from the Bikini Atoll Island. And anyway, it was great. It was great to go to their celebration. And the mayor actually had a proclamation, she's out of town, but someone read the proclamation for her, and I welcomed them on behalf of the city, so.
Well, thank you for doing that. Any other counselor comments?
And nothing for me tonight.
Nothing for you either, okay. All right, it is time for public comment, and I have an extensive list, and we will start through that. Carl Goodwin. Carl, you also have an information report. Do you want to wait till the information report to comment?
Whatever.
Why don't we do that, if you don't mind? Thank you. Cameron LaFollette.
It says it's not operating.
No, it's okay. It's just a screen.
Okay. Good evening, members of city council. My name is Cameron LaFollette. I live at 1825 23rd Street Northeast in Salem. And I want to discuss something that's going to be on the agenda later, number 10.2B, concerning dark sky guidelines, and just give a little background as to why this is on the agenda. In November of 23rd, my next-door neighbor in the area where I live put up a very bright mercury vapor light over the driveway, a completely unshaded light. As a result of that, now, all my windows which look out on the driveway, which is a fair number of them, because the way the house is situated, are subject to having a strong white light being forced in through the windows. I have to keep all the blinds down all the time after dark, and will probably have to get curtains as well, in order to prevent the house from being flooded with this ugly light from the neighbors. This is, in other words, a problem of light trespass. I and a neighbor across the street, who will be speaking a little later, went first with this problem to compliance, filed a complaint with the city. And the compliance officer came out and informed us that this was perfectly legal. It's, the bright, unshaded mercury vapor light was not out of compliance with city code at all, which was really surprising to me. So we didn't have any recourse there. So then we went to neighbor-to-neighbor, Salem's mediation service, in order to see if it would be possible to discuss this matter with the neighbors and come to some kind of accommodation. We began negotiation with a neighbor-to-neighbor mediator. My other affected neighbor and I offered to buy these next-door neighbors who put up the light, a completely new glarebuster light, which has shading and is specifically tailored to avoid light trespass. It cost $85. We were prepared to split the cost between ourselves and give it to the neighbor. However, they cut off all negotiations. They refused to continue with neighbor-to-neighbor. They refused the offer of the $85 light and refused to speak to us any further. So those of us affected in the neighborhood have no recourse in a situation like this, except for to come to city council and ask if there can be some kind of change to the code to allow recourse for citizens who unfortunately have neighbors who don't think their actions through and their effects on others. We researched the options that are available. Many other cities in Oregon have this same problem of light trespass in residential areas, which is what we're, the only thing that we're concerned with here. And we're proposing that it might be possible to change code to give citizens an opportunity for compliance-based.
Cameron, I'm going to have to.
Okay. Let me just finish my sentence. To do, to have some kind of recourse based on complaint rather than enforcement.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Boy, Shannon, I apologize, you're from Silverton, so as I mispronounce your name, I realize you don't vote in my ward. Gubels?
Gubels.
Gubels, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the 4H and Extension Service District. And my involvement with 4H is kind of, is broad. I'm the president of the Marion County Fair Board. I'm also a 4H leader and a parent of kids in 4H. And my biggest support of this is to see that we have youth development. And as I look at the different ways that I'm involved with 4H, it all goes back to my everyday kind of parent experience that I see with my son and also with almost 40 kids that we have in our 4H club. And that's the different opportunities that 4H fosters for them. They foster leadership, they foster community service. These are kids who have an opportunity to learn anything from home ec. all the way to raising livestock. And so, you know, every day, my kids get up and they go outside and they take care of their steers and their heifers for fair. And it's not just raising livestock for them, but it's also teaching them the value of hard work. And they also have the opportunity to give back to others through their community service. And, you know, I contribute all of that to the program of 4H and what it offers, not just to kids who live out in the country, but to kids who are in town. They can raise, you know, small animals, chickens, bunnies, they can bring crafts to the fair, they can do pine car derby. So there's many opportunities for kids, and this is something that I want us to continue for the future. And during my time on the fair board, I have seen the many benefits to the community, and I would like to see those continue through this district.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Paul Thomas?
Paul Thomas, 7097 Maplewood Drive, southeast Turner, Oregon. I want to ask you to support agenda item 5A, the 4H service district. I know, both as a master gardener and as mayor of the city of Turner, I know the good that comes from the extension service. We've had them in our schools, helping us set up gardens, orchards, and we're now working with them to control invasive species in a large park that's part of the city. And I just, it just provides tremendous value for the buck. I don't know of many things this cheap that do as much good as OSU Extension does. So I would urge your support, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you coming in. Any questions? Tony Courier.
I'm Tony Courier. I'm from, I'm a Salem resident. As a student here in the community, leaving middle school, I was a 4.0 student, and entering early college high school, I was shocked to find out that the best I could muster that year was a 2.63. That following year, I joined 4H through Dan Hoinaki. And since then, I've been to three international conferences and have learned better motivation for school, have learned that school's not just about a grade. And many students who do excellently in school have a hard time staying motivated, have a hard time seeing the big picture and how they matter. For me, this program has changed my life, and I can't even explain to you all the different things it's done for me. But the biggest being is that I've had the opportunity, even now, to educate and mentor other students like me who have similar problems. These students often are unmotivated, and they also have talents that they want to offer to the community, but they don't know where to start. This past year, we went to Scotland in July. I took two students. Dan Hoinaki goes to a conference every year, and I've been three times. This past time, however, these two students, they had more perspective. They have a better understanding of leadership and how they can impact it. They have an understanding of what food deserts are and how they can help. These are the leaders of tomorrow. And for me, I don't know where I would be without these students for me to help. Where is my purpose? Where is my place? Why would I go to college if there's not someone to help? And in the country where it's hard for youth to find motivation, to see the big picture, who feel it's hard to get by around here, I want to stand up for these people, these young ones.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? I'm going to ask speakers to follow Tony's example of speaking very clearly into the mic, so Counselor Tesler can hear you. You did a really nice job. I think she could hear you. But it would really help. Margaret Stevens.
My name is Margaret Stevens, and I live at 1830 23rd Street Northeast in Salem. This is directly across the street from the house that has the bright fluorescent light described in the previous testimony by Cameron LaFollette. My experience with this light is that it's so glowing and bright that it projects across the street onto my house and into the interior of my house as well. When looking outside at night, when the light is on, it's hard to see anything but the light itself. The code for lighting in residential areas has not been updated since 1996. Before then, there was nothing in code for residential areas. In 1996, the light code for industrial areas was copied into code for the residential areas. We acknowledge that lighting is a deterrent to crime, but when a light is too bright and glaring, it throws light in all directions, and it's considered a detriment to security due to the way the light's glare creates, blind shadow areas that hinder visibility and surveillance. So a better type of security light would be something that is glare-free. We did research to find out what other Oregon towns and cities have done to help residents with excessive light in their neighborhoods. And we found that several other towns, such as Sisters, Wilsonville, Troutdale, Gresham, and Carvalis, have used the guidelines suggested by the International Dark Sky Association, at least as a start. Considering their suggestions is one way to address light trespass in our residential areas. So what we're hoping for is an update to Salem's residential lighting code, one that would not be a workload for compliance. For existing lights, compliance might only be involved when there was a complaint in a residential area. We don't expect that there will be a lot of complaints, but we feel that there should be some way for Salem residents to get relief from overly bright lights that trespass from one property to the others around it in their neighborhoods.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Rick is a constituent. Rick Goppo? Boy. Did I get it right, Rick? Tell me.
You did. Actually, you're a constituent, so thank you so much. I'm Rick Goppo, president and CEO of Marion Polk Food Share, here speaking about measure or the item number 5A, US OSU Extension. You already have our letter of support on hand, but I just want to remind you that Marion Polk Food Share has a dual mission, which is to meet today's emergency food needs and to address root causes. We treat both of those as extremely important, and our partnership with OSU addresses We treat both of those as extremely important, and our partnership with OSU addresses both of those goals. On meeting today's emergency food needs, OSU has been instrumental in helping us design and implement cooking classes and guiding us in our nutrition programs, and we take seriously that not all food is the same. We have very aggressively moved to the language of nutritious food security, not just food security. OSU has been instrumental in helping us maintain and grow our 53 community gardens. That I'd all put in the category of today's causes. We're also addressing root causes, and again, OSU has been instrumental. As many of you know, Marion Polk Food Share has been pursuing what we dub the Better Burger, which is a veggie burger, but the goal is a high protein source of food to get out to families that meets the criteria of affordable, nutritious, and tasty. To do that, we went up to OSU Extension, to the OSU project, the Food Innovation Center. We could not have got there without OSU's partnership. And many of you know that we are now aggressively pursuing growing quinoa in the valley, and in fact, we will be planting 12 acres of quinoa any day now. We're doing, we're just a couple days out of that. And that is a very unique project. Quinoa is a high protein project, or high protein plant-based food to go for our burger. But the bigger context is, this really has the possibility of being a viable crop for the valley. So it serves us, but it also may serve the economic viability of the valley, and we could not do that without OSU. Our partnership with OSU Extension is really about food security, community, and a community security. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. James Gill.
Stated, my name is James Gill, and I'm the Field Operations Manager for Norpac Foods. Norpac is a family-owned food processing cooperative that is currently headquartered in state in Oregon, but we will soon be moving the home office to Salem. And I'd like to thank the city council on behalf of 240 individual family farm members and the hundreds of employees that make up Norpac Fruit and Vegetable Processing Cooperative for this opportunity to speak before the council. At this time, I'd like to express Norpac's support and seek the city of Salem's support for the establishment of a Marion County Extension and 4H Service District. For the past several years, the Marion County agricultural industry has experienced a dramatic reduction in state and county funds that have traditionally supported the agricultural community via the county Extension Services staff. We in the agricultural community believe that maintaining the presence of county agricultural Extension agents provides us with an important link between Oregon State University Agricultural Research Staff and a local agricultural population base. Without this link, much of the extensive and many times expensive research that has gone into developing new and industry-leading farming practices will have a much more difficult time being adopted into our growers' knowledge base. Historically, farmers, commercial crop consultants, private crop consultants, and processing field staff have all, to some degree, relied upon the input and expertise of qualified and experienced county Extension agents. Without the availability of such individuals, we would, as an industry, have a more difficult time sorting out solutions for farm production problems that inevitably arise in many agricultural situations. We are intrigued and encouraged with the concept that the assessed tax dollars would be leveraged with state and federal dollars, which would help minimize the financial impact to business and homeowners. As agriculture is central to a thriving Marion County and Salem economy, we believe that the investments made into our agricultural sector via the OSU Extension Service are resources well spent. Once again, I'd like to ask the city of Salem for their support and approval and adoption of a Marion County Service District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you. Herm Boes.
Good evening, good to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to share with the council and staff about the Neighborhood Partnership Program that the city offers. My name is Herm Boes, I live at 1688 Nut Tree Drive Northwest in Salem. And speaking about the Neighborhood Partnership Program. As you know, I work for Salem Leadership Foundation, and we are all about neighborhoods. And so we have really loved the Neighborhood Partnership Program and have seen many wonderful things happen as a result of the collaboration that comes together when the city, the neighborhood, nonprofits, profits, all get together and begin to work on a neighborhood. It just truly transforms the neighborhoods. Several years ago, I think it was in the Southeast Neighborhood Association... (beep) Just a moment. That's busy. I attended a picnic, and it was my first experience to be connected with the partnership program, and that's before you made it available to other neighborhoods to participate as well. And I just thought it was really cool to see all the neighbors come together from around the area and just have a picnic together. They played games, they got to know each other, and that just creates a healthier, safer neighborhood to be in. And so it was just really cool to be a part of that. And then also, the, I think it's the East, is it East Lancaster Neighborhood Association? Is that it? They've been involved over there, and through our connections, we just hear lots of great stories that are happening over there. And then the CAPEGS, which is a new acronym, Community and Partners of East Salem organization that takes place there. Just wonderful things happening. And in West Salem, we have a young lady, we call her the Queen of Edgewater, Janet Noakes. And several years ago, she was going to apply for the partnership, and it just didn't happen. And so we applied for it this year, and it's just been awesome to see the partners who have been able to come together and begin to brainstorm, and the excitement and the passion that the neighborhoods have to do something for their neighborhood. And it's just really been fun, and so I just want to speak in support of it. Just a little thing, we have Salem Leadership Foundation, Walker Middle School, Interfaith Hospitality Network, Dream Center, Boys and Girls Clubs, Soma Church, Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, several community partners, plus others who are all getting together to help make a better community in Edgewater in West Salem. And so I just think it's a great program, I want to support it, and hope you guys will continue to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boes. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Toby Haybeck.
I'm here in support of the proposal to reform a Marion County Extension and 4H Service District. My name is Toby Habek, I live at 771A Crosby Road Northeast in Woodburn. I've been a Marion County Master Gardener for seven years, and I am the 2014 President of the Master Gardeners Board of Directors. Our chapter has just under 200 members. We are a significant provider of volunteer hours to the county. In 2013, this totaled over 11,765 hours. Master Gardeners staffed a help desk in the Extension Office that answered the questions of 1,892 callers in 2013. Gardening clinics, the Salem Saturday Market, the Yard Garden and Home Sale, Earth Day, and the State Fair are just a few of the venues within the county in which we provide horticultural information to the public. In 2013, 17 Master Gardeners volunteered and assisted in 14 different community garden startups, which included Salem Housing Authority and three of the Boys and Girls Clubs. We maintain the three-acre Marion Demonstration Garden in Salem that is open seven days a week to the public to see gardening projects and trial gardens in the works. I support this initiative because losing the funding for the Extension Office would put a huge hole in my life and would also, in the lives of many of the Marion County residents. Establishing a Service District would prevent this from happening and provide a permanent source of funding for Extension volunteer services. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Cara Fisher.
Cara Fisher, 265 Oakway, Salem. I'm here this evening to speak in support of Agenda Item 5A. I am a member of the Citizen Volunteer Committee that is supporting formation of an Extension Service District, but I'm honored to speak to you this evening in my other role as one of the owners of Grand Vines Bistro and Wine, a small business in downtown Salem. While it's hardly a surprise that a wine shop would be interested in anything that enhances the production of grapes and that value-added product wineries, what has been a surprise to us is the growing demand for and interest in sustainable, locally grown food stuff, food products by our customers. We do what we can to support that interest, buying locally grown and processed products when they are available. But we see formation of this district as a very cost-effective way to return OSU Extension faculty positions to our Marion County that have been eliminated in the last few years that will help us enhance and further, excuse me, enhance our ability to provide those food products that our customers demand. So I respectfully request your support of formation of an Extension Service District that will include the city of Salem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, Claudia Howells.
Good evening, I'm Claudia Howells, and I am, oh, my address is 1045 Cross Street, which by the way, is right in the center of town. I am in support of Agenda 5A, and actually, I'm really amazed and I think thrilled that there's so much support here for that effort. While I have concerns about creating special taxing districts as a general policy issue, I am such a strong believer in the Extension Service that a special taxing district is much better than losing funding for something that I think is one of the most effective programs of all time. I had the wonderful opportunity now, some 40 years ago, to work as an outreach worker for the Lane County Extension Service in rural Lane County. But even then, I was no stranger to the Extension Service. My maternal grandparents were farmers during the Depression in Missouri, and both were active in the Extension Service for many, many years. Actually, they both lived to be almost 100 and were active up until the end. It was not just about learning about farming, it was about providing essential life skills, particularly for women. I'll share something sort of fun. I think some of you notice I knit here. My grandmother gave me this knitting book when I was in high school, so it's been around a long time. Recently, I looked at it again. Remember, my grandparents lived in Missouri. And here is what it says. Reprinted for use in Missouri for permission by Cooperative Extension Service, Oregon State University. And actually, I wish I could talk our son, who's at Corn Valles, to be an Extension Agent. Today, we need to provide the best information to a growing number of young, new farmers, and it is as important today as it was in 1914 and during the Dust Bowl. And equally important, perhaps more, is to provide essential life skills to families living in poverty, and for that matter, anyone else. Having spent the last eight years working with homeless families, it is increasingly obvious to me that what many of us may have learned in school is now no longer taught. I also realize that as much as, so much of what I know and take for granted, that I learned from my mother, who learned from hers, is a result of the Extension Service. Nutrition, food handling, how to sew on a button, how to dry the nail, are all things Americans learn through 4H Clubs and home Extension Groups. We all talk about needing to teach people how to fish. Extension Services have been teaching people how to fish for 100 years, and it is something we really need to do. So...
Thank you.
I'm sure I have your support in pursuing it.
Patty Tipton.
Hi, I'm Patty Tipton, I live at 3240 Hamel Street, Salem 97301. I'm here to support parks. I just joined the board, so I'm kind of new at that part, but I've been working on my neighborhood park for over seven years now, East Gate Basin Park. And it takes a lot of components to make a park. And if you drive by it, you see the results of that, many hours of volunteers planting trees, and the grants we have gotten for a number of things in the park. And they wouldn't have been done without the help of certain people. And some of those people are actually here tonight. Jessica Price, she has been helping me with my park for a number of years, with her family, spreading hawvee, cleaning it up, and helping to purchase donuts and coffee for, to help people come. She also has planted, has paid for, through the partnership, flyers to let people know when and where we were meeting at the park, and I just couldn't have done it without her. Also, there's Toni. She has been a big help over the years, too. She helped me get grants for a number of the things that we have in our park, which is the streetlight, the park bench, the fence. All these things add to our park. We've also had, I also got connected to the Watershed Council, got grants from them to plant 70 trees and plants in my little park. Because of these different components and others I cannot even name, we would not have had a park in my neighborhood. And like I said, the best results is to just drive by and see the families and the people that use it. That is the best reward I can offer. So please, support your parks and the park board. We really need people out there to help take care of them, maintain them, and protect them. Protection is very important, too. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Are there any questions? Carl Goodwin.
Good evening, Salem Mayor, or Acting Mayor, and city council members. My name is Carl Goodwin, I reside at 559 Eagle Feather Street Northwest, and I'm also the President of the Salem Park and Recreation Advisory Board. I know in your, in your packet, you have a copy of our annual report, so I'm not going to go into a lot of information that's in there, because you have, you take your time to read it and go through it. There are some major projects going on which will greatly improve the park in Salem, such as the bridge to Mental Brown Island and the addition of the land to Riverfront Park, which is our major parks, and will give us access, walkways, and bicycle access from West Salem all the way to Mental Brown and also on out towards Willamette University. On May 12th, 2013, the council approved the comprehensive master plan. And it took quite a few years to get it updated. A major problem in achieving the recommendations is a permanent source of funding... A major problem in achieving the recommendations is a permanent source of funding for the maintenance of all our parks, both the large ones and the small neighborhood parks such as she just mentioned. Without some source of funding, the master plan will become obsolete and the parks, especially in neighborhood parks, will continue to deteriorate and cost more to upgrade them. The master plan indicates a deficit in maintenance in some neighborhood parks such as upgrading and play areas. Another problem that the board feels needs to be addressed is the lack of ball fields. These are softball plus soccer fields. And I was made aware by other members of the board that there is an location with existing fields in the northwest corner of the state hospital, which is being considered to access by the state of Oregon. And that's on D and 23rd Street, which already has baseball fields. I can't say that I've seen them, but apparently it does have the fields there. And we feel that it should be kept in the public hands. Now, this can either be through the state or somehow the city acquiring it. The Salem Park and Recreation Advisory Board would like to thank all the volunteers that do work in maintaining parks the best they can. The board would also like to thank the park staff for all their good work in getting the most from a limited amount of funds. Because it seems like the parks are all kind of on the back end when the general fund, which most of our funds come out of, is kind of the bottom on the run. So anytime cuts come, it's the parks that take it. And as the master plan showed, we have a great amount that needs to be done. And finally, the board would like to extend an invitation to the mayor and the city council members to attend our meetings. The board has asked the city park staff that you receive a copy of our agenda packet to be sent out prior, the week prior to all our meetings, so that you can see what is on the agenda. And if there is anything you feel important, you can either attend or send an email to Toni. And that way, we can at least get some communication going between the council and our board. Because I've been on the board as president and that's one thing I feel is lacking, that we need some more communication between the two of us. And that's, I kept it within the three minutes and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Very good. That, that's really an excellent report that has been prepared as an information report. It really is quite good. Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, we tried to put in everything that we did and everything we're trying to do.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Carl, for coming down. I agree wholeheartedly. You know, once the, the master planning committee went away, we lost a lot of that communication outside of those other folks that are responsible for parks inside of our neighborhood associations. But with the board, there probably isn't a lot of communication besides a staff report that wanders back and forth.
Well, we're going to try to change that.
Thank you.
Given you the agenda, then you can tell us it's no good or whatever.
Never. Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. Thanks, Carl, for the report and for your service on the master plan committee. So I know we put in a lot of, two, couple, three years, couple, three years on that committee, so I appreciate that.
At least.
Yeah, it was. And, and I really appreciate that this report also gives us some constructive feedback, you know, what's working well, but what, you know, what your vision is, what are some things that we really need, so it's not all just, you know, fun and games, no pun intended, but it's, you know, there are some things that we could do, so I appreciate that. And, and it's been a couple of years probably since I've been to one of your meetings, but you guys are really the most fun advisory board. I mean, I love all of our advisory boards, but you guys have a lot of fun and you're just a great group. So yeah, I do recommend any of the council or the public, the meetings are open to the public. If you can make it to a Parks meeting, they're, they're good. And we really need the input from the public. We got a lot going on with parks. For a long time, we had to kind of stop what we were doing. We just, you know, we didn't have funding and, and whatever, so things are slowly picking up. And so this is really the time to be thinking about, you know, where are we going with this and how are we going to be able to accomplish those things we put in our master plan.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay, that's everyone who has signed up. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the council? All righty, Counselor Nanki, the consent agenda calendar. I just wanted to alert the recorder that Counselor Tesler is no longer with us on the phone. Okay, so if you'd note that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the revised agenda would take us to 10-2C at the present moment.
Oh, would it?
Yes.
Go on, do that.
From the additions, deletions portion previously.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that.
Sure. I would move that staff place Hillficker Park in the park master planning schedule to follow those parks that staff currently has scheduled in their work plans.
Second. Second by Dickey.
And there's a couple of folks from Morningside here that'll be testifying in regards to the, the neighborhood plan. They've been using SPIF grants and several other donations and trying to get Hillficker up to where it's usable. And, you know, we've talked about phasing our parks in from tortuous path to at least flat so people can actually use them. And we have people out there playing with it and talking with staff. Bailey Ridge, I think, is next on theirs. And then it swings back around. They try to circle around town and that quadrant would be next in play. So the Neighborhood Association had discussed that at one of their meetings and they asked me to bring forth a counselor motion.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Now the consent calendar.
Excuse me. I would move the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2A by Counselor Bennett. 3.3C by Counselor Dickey. 3.3G by Counselor Bennett. And I noted there was a potential to postpone.
And we postponed E.
Are we actually postponing?
Yeah, why don't we postpone it to the 28th?
And postpone 3.3E regarding a property donation until April 28th.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Dickey? Dickey, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Say nay. Motion passes. Okay, public hearings. Let's start with public hearing 4A. Would you like to introduce that?
The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of ordinance bill number 214 relating to adoption of the updated Morningside Neighborhood Plan, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the proposal. The city council shall grant such requests by continuing public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Thank you. Lisa, you're up.
Yes. Good evening, Council. My name's Lisa Anderson-Oblby. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department and I'm here tonight to present the Morningside Neighborhood Plan update. I requested the staff report and its attachments be entered into the official record. So you may not be familiar with Morningside. This map shows you the boundaries. The Neighborhood Association was established in 1976 as the thirteenth recognized Neighborhood Association in Salem. Approximately 8,700 people live within Morningside. There's over 250 businesses, including the Regional Employment Center of Fairview Industrial Park. It also includes sustainable Fairview. Morningside does have an adopted neighborhood plan from 1984, so tonight's plan would replace that one. As you may know, we have eighteen Neighborhood Associations. We only have nine adopted Neighborhood Plans. The majority of those are from the late seventies and early eighties, including Morningside's, which is from 1984. The latest Neighborhood Plan that we did was West Salem and that was a decade ago. So this is the first Neighborhood Plan that we've worked on and that will be adopting in over ten years. So what is a Neighborhood Plan? Well, the main purpose of a Neighborhood Plan is to get the community engaged in their neighborhood. And so I'll talk to you a lot about the outreach that we did for this plan to make that happen. The actual plan itself has two functions. The first is for the Neighborhood Association to use that plan when a land use proposal comes forward or a development proposal, transportation project. And they can use that plan and they can look at it and say, what, what was important to our neighbors when we worked on this plan? And how does this proposal comply with that? So it, it's not just dependent on the ten or twenty people that happen to be at the Morningside meeting that night, but they can say, we've had hundreds of people that back these ideas and so there's more weight with their recommendations. And then the city uses it as well, so the planning staff, public work staff, et cetera, when there's a proposal coming forward, we can look at the Neighborhood Plan and we know what's important to the neighborhood as we're evaluating those proposals. So the first thing we did when we started outreach was to brand the project and give it a name that people could get familiar with. So it was called the Morningside 360 Plan, a volunteer-powered neighborhood plan. And we used that brand as we did a neighborhood-wide mailer, so every resident, property owner, business owner in the neighborhood got a postcard to let them know when the project kicked off. We did targeted mailings to certain areas to let people know of meetings that dealt just with their property. You know, we have email blasts, a project website, we use social media, press releases, it was in the newspaper. And of course, the Neighborhood Association talked about it at their monthly meeting. And so there were different ways that people could participate. We had monthly, bi-monthly meetings that dealt just with the Neighborhood Plan, stakeholder interviews, surveys. We had informational meetings and work sessions where we had the draft plan for people to look at and of course, a project webpage. And so the result of all of that outreach is that we had over a hundred people that have contributed to this plan and that includes residents, the Neighborhood Association board members, property owners, business owners, various stakeholders and people interested in the neighborhood. And just so you know what we're asking you to do tonight, we're asking you to adopt the Neighborhood Plan, but it's adopted in two components. So the goals and policies listed in the plan and the generalized land use map will actually be adopted as a component of our comprehensive plan. And I've listed the other components up here, so you can kind of understand what a component is, like our Parks Master Plan and our urban growth boundary and our transportation system plan. So those portions of the Neighborhood Plan, the goals, the policies, and the generalized land use map will be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. The rest of the Neighborhood Plan, so the recommended actions and the conceptual map that you'll see in the plan, will just be adopted as a support document, so that's just a policy guideline, but it's non-binding and it won't be part of the comprehensive So what's in the plan? Our code says that when you do a Neighborhood Plan, you have to address land use and transportation, public facilities, housing, and parks and open space. And then beyond that, a neighborhood can choose to address anything that's important to them, such as urban design or environmental quality, economic development. And so I thought I'd just highlight a few of the innovative things that have come out of the plan. So on this slide, it talks about residential development. So one of the recommendations out of the plan is that the city should allow accessory dwelling units. Those are known sometimes as granny flats or mother-in-law units. So a recommendation is that we should allow those in our single-family zones. We don't currently allow that, so you can't put a little, you know, unit in your backyard for your, your mother-in-law or you can't rent it out or anything like that. So that's a recommendation. That we should allow context-sensitive residential infill. So when there is residential infill, they want to make sure that it's compatible with the existing neighborhood that's already there. And another recommendation is that we remove conditional use requirements for mixed-use buildings, so it's kind of seen as a barrier that you have to go through conditional use to do a mixed-use building. And the, in the plan, they want to make it easier for people to do that. Some of the commercial ideas that came out of the plan is encouraging the retrofit of strip-type development, especially to promote pedestrian-friendly commercial centers. And then they also have a lot of policies and recommended actions to support local job creation and entrepreneurship. Under transportation, a lot of their goals and policies have to do with designing for all modes of users, including auto, transit, bike, and pedestrian, and providing greater pedestrian standards. A specific recommended action was to reclassify Hillficker Lane as a collector. The city's already taking action on that in our current TSP amendments that are going through the process right now. As I mentioned, Fairview Industrial Park is in the neighborhood and so some of their ideas were to update or replace the industrial business campus zone to respond to the market and reduce the need for property owners to do zone changes. We've already acted on that in the UDC, which will become effective next month. Some other ideas or new uses in that area should contribute to the tax base and provide family wage jobs. They want us to emphasize rail and airport opportunities out there and to expand innovative programs such as the Small Business Loan program that we currently have. And so I mentioned a conceptual map, so this is in the plan and it's on the right on the slide here. So this has to do with the Kubler I-5 Northwest Quadrant, which is the boundary, the southern portion of Morningside. So the map on the left, you can see that most of the property is shown in light green. That means it's designated as developing residential and would most likely be developed as single-family housing under the current designations. And so what the neighborhood did is they worked on a map of a different way that that property could develop. So some of the highlights are the large blue asterisk there showing that a large urban park could be located in this area. You know, a specific location wasn't picked, it's just showing the general area. The round circles over the asterisk are just letting you know that there's a hill right there. And so some of the other things to note on this map is along Kubler and I-5 where it's red, they're saying that it could be commercial retail uses. More intensive along I-5 and less intensive as you move to the west, that's why the color changes. They had thoughts about Fairview Industrial Park extending to the west and those, sorry, to the south, so those areas are shown in purple where the industrial park could extend. And then the beige color below the blue asterisk there is showing that an area they thought was appropriate for commercial office. And then some of the lines running through it are showing where they think that multi-use paths could go through the neighborhood. And I just want to point out that this is a conceptual map, so this is part of the plan that won't be adopted as the comprehensive plan, so it's not binding on anybody's property. The Neighborhood Association had lots of meetings with the property owners in this area and changed and updated the map based on their input, so they wanted to make sure that when they brought it before you, that they were at a place where the property owners were happy with the map and they were happy with the map. So there's consensus on this conceptual map. But again, it's non-binding, it's just to show you a vision that they have for their So based on the outreach that we've done and the plan that we have before you, the recommendation tonight is for the council to adopt the goals, policies, and generalized land use map of the updated Morningside Neighborhood Plan as a component of the comprehensive plan and to adopt the portions of the Morningside Plan other than the goals, policies, and generalized land use map as support documents, which will replace the 1984 Morningside Neighborhood Plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Pamela Schmidling, you're up.
Hi, I'm Pamela Schmidling and I live at 735 Ratcliffe Drive Southeast. I am currently Chair of Morningside Neighborhood. We've been working on this plan for over two years now, so a lot of work has gone in on our parts, along with some city staff. It's just been immense at what can happen and the possibilities and then tying in all of the community and just trying to make sure that you kind of please everybody, but you look for the future in how we can all work together. So with that... So with that, we have decided that we really like the version that you have before you, and we would love to see it come together finally and be the second neighborhood. Any questions?
I don't have any. Does anyone else?
Good.
She's hoping for a bud.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it was just an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else like to address council in this public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed. With council's permission, I would like to reorder the public hearings and go to four point... Oh, do you want to do the action on it real quick?
Actually, that'd be great.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, I would move staff recommendation, including moving the Morningside Neighborhood Plan to second reading for enactment.
Second.
Second by Benards. Anybody?
Just to make a comment, I've, you know, mid-'80s, we tried to update the plan in the mid-'90s, and again in the mid-'80s. So it's nice, after about 19 years of being involved in it myself, to actually, to see it come forth, because it was like, "This is what we want." City said no. This is what we want. City said no. And this process worked very well. We did the West Salem Neighborhood Association Plan, which was expensive, and it would have cost us like a million dollars per neighborhood association to do that, so the city and Morningside took the approach to make a new model, and it's actually moving forward already, and so the benefits are many and wondrous.
They are, they are. I'm working with neighbors in Cessna and Nen under Lisa Anderson Obelby's tutelage, and we're working our way right through the plan. It's really quite a good model. Okay, yes.
I'm going to vote in support of the measures, or the motion as it's been presented. One of the things that I like about it is, and this plan, there's so many aspects to it, and I know there's been hundreds of people who put their time into developing this plan, it's way too complex for me to pick apart any one little part. But I do have an interest in Fairview Industrial Drive, and I'd like to see that the industrial business camp is zone redone to something else. It has been a barrier to the development of those vacant lots that are out there. Every one has to go through, and so many have been changed over to, I think, Commercial General or something else, but a lot, something that's a lot more profitable for businesses to come in on. You know, that's just one of many aspects of this plan that I really enjoy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Claus.
Thank you. I was intrigued by Lisa's talking about the Opportunity Areas map. I thought it was very interesting, and I definitely like the ideas that are presented. And I'm curious to see kind of what moves forward as we move forward in the area of the northeast quadrant of Kubler and I-5, because it's a big opportunity for Salem in general, especially with the coming online of our, I don't remember the name of the water tower, we changed the name. Is it?
Mill Creek Reservoir.
Mill Creek Reservoir, no. That's a good thing, and I'll definitely be interested in this as it moves forward. And I think my only thought on this is, I want to make sure, because of its proximity to the South Gateway Neighborhood Association and such, I don't know how much outreach was done to some of the neighboring areas, but, you know, a lot of people that are living close on the south side of the road, they have probably a bigger say than a lot of the people in this neighborhood association. So I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'm just saying, I like the ideas, and I just hope that as we move forward, we continue with everybody, and I'm not saying I don't like these ideas, I think they're great ones. I think this is what a lot of people think in Ward Ford and in South Gateway, so anyway, I'm definitely in support.
Great. All right, any further comments? Vote then, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Now, if there's no objection, I'd like to proceed to 4C. Public hearing? Okay? No objection? Open the public hearing on 4C.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Ordinance Bill Number 414, declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities within the City of Salem.
Dan Atchison, City Attorney. I just have a few short points to make, and then I'll let you proceed to deliberations. As we discussed in your work session, this is an ordinance that would place a moratorium on unregistered dispensaries within the City of Salem for a period of up to one year. The way the ordinance is currently worded is that the moratorium would be a one-year moratorium beginning May 1st of 2014, ending May 1st, 2015. It applies to dispensaries that have not been registered with the state, so they would have to receive their registration from the state prior to the effective date of the ordinance. The ordinance would exempt any dispensary, obviously, that has received this registration. Other highlights of the ordinance provides for certain penalties for dispensaries that haven't been registered, that are operating in violation of the ordinance. It expressly states that the ordinance may be rescinded upon the adoption of regulations for dispensaries, city regulations for dispensaries. At the work session, you discussed the idea of coming forward to council with a set of regulations that would supplement the state regulatory system. We're currently working on that, and there's a counselor item later on that's going to suggest a council subcommittee made up of counselors, as well as stakeholders, to discuss a regulatory system. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Just go ahead, public hearing. Questions? Margot Lucas.
Good evening, councilors, city staff, law enforcement in the rear of the room. My name is Margot Lucas, and I run the Alternative Relief Clinic, and I also represent the cannabis industry here in the greater Salem area. We first of all want to thank the city for bringing forth an ordinance by which safe access for state medical marijuana patients can be continued within the City of Salem. This is an important but incremental step in the legislative process that is before all of you. The cannabis industry endeavors to build an excellent working relationship with the city, including law enforcement. We understand that the city wishes also to pass reasonable rules and regulations under which these dispensaries will operate. We welcome and look forward to being involved in that process. State law recognizes that medical marijuana is medicine. Its use is currently allowed for many conditions, including cancer, multiple sclerosis, and the most recent addition, post-traumatic stress, which is so important to our returning veterans. We see that you are open to learning more about our industry and the new jobs and economic opportunities that it will bring. We also expect new revenues going forward, and that can be used for funding public schools, public health, and public safety programs. Building a good relationship now will be the backbone of our future success together. I want to again thank you for retaining safe access for patients here in the city, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you. This, that's it.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Margot?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
We were, a couple of us were talking before the meeting tonight, and we're curious, how long does it take to actually go through the certification process?
Well, most of the dispensary members here in the city applied on March 3rd, and there are, I believe, two-thirds of those applications have been processed. Some have resulted in licensing, some have resulted in conditional provisional licenses, and others are still being processed. There is no real timeframe. We have talked to Tom Burns, the Director of Oregon Health Authority that runs the program, and he has said that those licenses should be at least looked at with the final, we believe they should all be looked at prior to May 1st, but they cannot guarantee us that. So that is a concern of ours. We're monitoring the licenses being issued, and we're staying on top of that, and we may be back in touch with you if there's, you know, some concerns there. But right now, we are waiting for those licenses to be issued, and that is up to the state.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Margot, what is a provisional license?
A provisional license would be given if there was some concern. It may be a certain camera position that needs to be added. It may be another issue. It could be a safe that needed to be added, or things like this, where the state does give the applicant opportunity to correct, in a short timeframe, to correct those issues, and then would be issuing a full license as opposed to a provisional one.
Councilor Benards.
Since you represent the cannabis community in the city, can you tell me a few things? First off, how many dispensaries are there located currently in Salem? How many of those have received licenses to date, provisional or otherwise? And talk a little bit about those that didn't even apply.
I don't know of any that did not apply in the City of Salem. We currently have three that have been issued, and there are, I believe, eight more that are pending.
So the total number of dispensaries, though, right now?
I believe the total number is 11. There's one that is an applicant, that is a new applicant, I believe, also, too. So there was, go ahead.
Oh, so even if there is a moratorium on medical cannabis, there's going to be access somewhere along the line at this point, because there will be dispensaries open despite the moratorium?
Correct. At this time, we have three fully licensed by the state facilities within the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
And there should be more coming online prior to May 1st.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Mark Cusick?
Mr. Chair, councilors, my name is Mark Cusick. My wife and I are the owner, operators of Herbal Grasslands, located at 1130 Royvon's Avenue Southeast here in Salem. We are a licensed facility. We were the second one in the city to get our license. We were very excited. What I wanted to talk about tonight was the process that we went through finding a location. I have 30 years of banking slash lending experience, both commercial and residential. I am, right now, I have a principal broker real estate license, so I know the vast majority of the players in the marketplace. We started our search back in about June, July of last summer, and it took until about mid-January to finally find a location where we were more than 1,000 feet from a school, we were more than 1,000 feet from another facility. We were in a zone that we felt was going to be appropriate, per many conversations with your planning department. And I can tell you, of the four different entities that I spoke with, your planning department was wonderful. They were very helpful. And then the fourth component was the getting a landlord that would actually talk to us. That's a huge issue, because there's a lot of ramifications to a landlord. Because of the banking scenario that's going on out there, if they have a loan on their property, they could get their loan pulled if the bank finds out that one of their tenants is a facility, because you have the potential money laundering issues that the federal government has for, you know, for the general illegal drug trade. So it's not an easy process, so I would ask that as you're putting your rules and regulations together, that you include some of our group in that process to give some insight as to how it works, because while I agree, you guys should certainly have a say in how the regulations go forward, reasonableness, and so far, everything's been very reasonable. But, you know, just continuing on the reasonableness would be really welcome. And I welcome any of you to come out and visit our shop. I would love to show it to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we do proceed with a council subcommittee, those are public, so it's a y'all come if you want to participate. Thank you. I have no one else signed up for this public hearing? Okay, I will close public hearing. Councilor Nanki, do you want to make a motion?
Question to staff.
Oh, you want to ask staff some questions? Okay.
So not close public hearing?
Okay, yeah, we'll take that back. Go ahead, have at it.
I guess with the way the staff recommendation is put forward right now, which is for a moratorium for a year, I just want to be sure, it could be rescinded at any time, not just after regulations have been considered, or approved, or otherwise dealt with by the council, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, if a shorter timeframe than staff recommendation of a year was put on it, could that timeframe be extended if we were not prepared by such a date?
Yes, the state law would allow us to do up to one year. If you wanted to have an ordinance with a shorter amount of time, you could come back and amend that ordinance up to the one year.
Okay. I think those are my only two questions right now. Thank you.
Councilor Dickey.
So reading through the staff report, I wasn't completely clear on this, but when she was talking about provisional license versus a permanent license, does, would our ordinance only cover, like, to exempt people who already have a license? Is that only permanent license? Does it, would it exempt someone who has a provisional license? Do you know?
I'm not aware of a provisional licensing process with the state. I'm not, just not familiar with it, so it's hard to say, but the way it was drafted would be that they'd actually receive their, you know, registration certificate from the state by May 1st.
Councilor Benards.
So the effective date of the moratorium would be, what, May 1st, 2014? Is that correct?
The effect, it would be effective from, actually, April 28th is when you would conduct second reading. There's an emergency clause in the ordinance, so it would be effective April 28th, 2014, through May 1st, 2015.
Okay, so we're talking just later this month, then? We're talking our next council meeting?
Right, you're going to do first reading tonight.
Okay.
And then second reading would occur on April 28th.
And there's no idea how long it takes these applications to go through the process to know how many are going to be licensed at that point, or taken care of there? There's nothing that we have, no indication from the state at all?
That's correct.
So if those that are in the process of getting permit, they don't get one, they're just going to be out of luck of getting it before we rescind the moratorium?
They would need to wait until we'd adopted regulations and rescinded the moratorium. The idea behind that is, if you have several dispensaries that are new and beginning operation or continuing operations, and your regulations require a change in their location, or a change in the way they do business, once the regulations are put in place, that's going to require considerable staff time to work with those dispensaries to change their operations. It's going to require the dispensaries themselves to lose their investment, perhaps in a lease where they've already opened business, versus waiting until we've adopted regulations and they can open in compliance with those regulations.
So the moratorium does not affect, I'm going to make this clear, does not affect those that have already gotten their license and have gone through the process, thus, those that need the medical marijuana, still have an avenue, even though some of the stores would not be open, there still would be access to materials within this community, correct?
That's correct. And in addition, that this, the state law and the moratorium, as well as the potential city regulations, only affect dispensaries. Dispensaries are based off of growers' excess, so they're, regardless of the dispensary option, they still have options to obtain medical marijuana from their providers outside of the dispensary system.
Interesting. Any further questions? Councilor Dickey.
So again, I'm trying to pick this out of the staff report. If a dispensary has received a license, but they, do they, do you know, do they have to have a location to get a license? So they, or they couldn't just have a license and then go around looking for a location?
My understanding is that the registration they receive is based off of the location, because there's locational considerations, so they have to say, "This is where we're opening." They have to show the state where the camera's going to be located, how the facility's going to operate.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Councilor Nanki? Counselor Nanki, do you want to move along?
I would move staff recommendation with the following change to ordinance Bill 4-14, occurring in Section 6 under duration, that the sentence be modified to read, "The moratorium imposed by this ordinance shall be effective until October 27th, 2014, unless rescinded sooner." And if I may speak to that, that October 27th would be the alternate to May 1st. I know we've spoken that, you know, we could have something ready by July. I think there's people that are eager to see this move along, that will actually finish up prior to the November election as well, which may make a lot of things moot, but could potentially roll those regulations into retail in the event recreational marijuana is adopted by the voters.
Counselor Benards?
I just want to be clear, and I don't want to challenge our city attorney or anything, but I thought I'd heard at one of our previous meetings that if we did not take the full one year, that we could not extend it during the year if we chose a shorter period. I want to be sure on this, because it's a big issue. Yes, Counselor, I understand. The state law simply requires us to adopt a moratorium prior to May 1st. There's nothing in the state law that would prevent us from adopting a moratorium for less than a year, and then during that period of time, if we wanted to extend it for the full year, we could do that.
Okay. Counselor Claus?
Along those lines, I'm in support of the motion as is, with the caveat that we have the ability to extend if needed. I know sometimes we get into the weeds of something on a subcommittee, and, oh my goodness, we've got so much to consider, and it takes us a long time to get it right, for the benefit of both sides of any argument. So I just want to make sure we have that caveat. I do understand the point, though. I mean, part of it is, I don't want something just dragging out either. So, anyway, with that caveat, I'm in support.
Counselor Dickey?
Thanks. And on the other side of that, I would be happy to get this issue resolved before, we're going to have a big change on the council next year. We've got four, we'll have four new counselors, so to be able, for us to be able to handle that and not leave it for them, maybe, so we just don't know. So, yeah, so it's, I think I'd be glad to see that get resolved. And also, I feel like that gives us a little bit of, just shortening that time helps us to stay on task and to be motivated to get that done. So, yeah, with that, I will support the motion as well.
Okay. Any further comment?
Pardon me, Counselor Bennett.
I'm sorry.
Did we have a second to the motion?
Dickey.
Counselor Dickey, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We'll open the public hearing on 4B.
Okay, the city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Resolution Number 201422, setting fees and charges for the planning division of the Community Development Department. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on this issue, on that issue, excuse me. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the proposal. The city council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Counselors. I'm Pamela Cole, Associate Planner, and I would like to introduce the staff report, exhibits, and presentation into the record. Council approved the wireless ordinance on March 24th, and it's effective on April 23rd. There are several new types of applications created through that code amendment and ordinance, and we need to set fees for those. A public hearing's required to set fees. It's considered a land use application or land use type of process, so the public hearing's required. We gave notice to DLCD and other interested parties who are entitled to receive notice. When we set fees, state statute limits those fees to no more than the actual or average cost of providing service. The proposed fees are based on current fees for land use applications that have similar processes, and our fees are generally below the actual cost of processing applications. The total fees that you'll see on these slides include the base fees, plus our processing charges of $1,250, and automation charges of $5, and some notification fees of 17 for certain types of cases. The first type that we're going to talk about tonight is the temporary siting. We haven't had this type of an application process before. It's similar to a plan check that we would do for commercial alterations, and we set the fee accordingly at $248.50. The second type of fee is an antenna attachment to an existing structure. This is similar to one of our Class II site plan reviews, and we're setting the fee at The next one is a utility pole replacement for the purpose of attaching wireless communications antennas, and this is similar to a Class III site plan review that involves public notice and gives the public an opportunity to comment, and the fee for that would be The next type is a new or substantially modified cell tower application. This is similar to our current conditional use process, and we're setting the fee at We also have a special land use adjustment just for the wireless applications. We're proposing to set the fee the same as for other types of Class II zoning adjustments at $444.50. For appeals, state law limits the appeal fees to either the actual cost of preparing and conducting the appeal, or $250, whichever is less. Our typical appeal cases cost more than $250, so the base fee will be $250, and then we're just adding the processing and automation charges. One of the new features of the wireless code would be the ability to obtain third-party review for certain types of cases, and we've consulted several engineers who perform this type of service, and they estimate an hourly fee of $225. So we're proposing a base fee of that first hour, $225, plus the processing and automation charges, and then for additional hours of review, an hourly rate of $225. We've received estimates that the type of review would be about eight hours, so the total would come to just over $1,800. Therefore, we encourage council to adopt Resolution 201422, setting the land use fees and charges for wireless communications facilities applications submitted on or after the effective date of engrossed ordinance 2413.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no one signed up to testify on this. Is there anyone who wanted to testify on this, in this public hearing? Any questions for staff? Yes.
Just a quick one. I trust our fees are basically based off of what we're looking at for staff time, and as we hit hundreds of these a year, we'll readjust as needed.
Well, we will have that opportunity to revisit them in the future, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, the answer, I just want to follow up on this. So the answer is yes, this is the best estimate of actual costs for this?
That's correct.
Did I understand you correctly? Okay.
Yes.
And you'll come back to us at some point with a report, once we get one of these applications, to see if it worked?
And Mr. Gross would like to add something.
Yes, if I may. Glenn Gross, the Community Development Director. I just want to clarify, the fees we're proposing are consistent with the rest of the fee schedule for similar types of processes. Right now, our planning fees do not recover the full cost of processing the applications. We are probably at about 40% of covering that. You recall that we are bringing forth a series of planning fee increases to move us from where we are today to covering 50% of our costs. That's our goal. We've worked with our stakeholders to get consensus on that. So it would be similar here. The exception would be for the third-party review. Here, we're trying to capture the full cost for hiring the consultant to give us the peer review, so that would be an exception. The other fees are more in line with our current fee schedule. I hope that helps.
Counselor Benards? Any further questions? Close the public hearing. Chair's going to make a motion on this. Chair moves this public, oops, I closed it. I didn't mean to close it. That was an accident again. I want to continue this public hearing until the 28th, when there's enough people here to vote on it and have it successfully pass. Okay? Okay, you've got a second from Nanki?
Is this open for public, public comment at this point, whether written or testimony? Or is it just closed, and the decision will be deliberated on that meeting?
It's, I'm looking forward to a deliberation at the next meeting.
Okay. If I may, Counselor, I think the motion would be to close the public hearing and continue it for deliberations until April 28th.
Okay.
Sounds like a great motion.
Exactly what we want.
It's not just a hat rack.
Yeah, I just don't want to see this end up sideways tonight, okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Okay? Special orders of business. I'm going to call up, let's take a look at 5A. We have a management report proposed, it's on the proposal to form the Marion County Extension and 4H Service District.
Good evening, Sandra Montoya, Assistant Finance Director. This evening, I'd like to introduce two speakers. I have Derek Godwin. He's the OSU Extension West Central Region Administrator. And we also have John Burt. He's the Executive Director for Farmers Ending Hunger and presenter for the Citizens for Marion County Extension. They're here to speak to Item 5A tonight, which is a proposal to form a Marion County Extension and 4H Service District. I won't even try and say that fast. They are following all of the speakers that you had this evening and public comment, and they just have a few short words for you, a short presentation, and then some questions. We also have some handouts, and I'll go through and put those at your desk.
And this will be at three minutes? Is that, can you guys each do three minutes and have your say?
They're going to do their best. Nice and short.
Okay, great.
Sure, three minutes. Good evening, Chair Bennett and Counselors. We will speed it up. I'm part of a group of volunteers, the Citizens for Marion County Extension, also served as a county extension agent for 33 years for Oregon State University, and the last 16 of it here in Marion County and Salem. We're here tonight because the citizens' group has started an effort to form a district and a tax base with that district to be placed on the May of 2015 ballot for Marion County. The first step was to gain the support of Marion County Government and the Commissioners. You have a resolution, I think in part of your packet, passed by the Commissioners back in February, that provided their support and encourages this effort to move forward. Moving forward now gets to the point where, in early May, we will be filing the initial paperwork to create the initiative petition and begin the collection of signatures. Derek will provide some more details on that. Part of this process is that each incorporated city, that's why we're here tonight, each incorporated city is asked, has the option to be included in or not included in that district. And we're here tonight to ask the city of Salem to move forward with action, which would be in the form of a resolution eventually, to declare that you'd be included in this district and it's tax-based. There are 20 cities in Marion County, the most of any counties, so we've got, they have a large task at hand to get out and visit all those cities. I just want, one other thing about why the districts needed, the very first county agent in Oregon was in Marion County, Luther Chapin. His family still is out north of town, north of Kaiser. Chapin's farm out there, and we have a grand, a great history of involvement with, our link to the university, to the land-grant university in the state, to TOS, Agricultural, Forestry, Economic Development, and Family and Community Living, 4H programs you've heard about, and as well as the Master Gardener Horticultural Program, great volunteer program. So, Derek, do you have a minute?
All right, thanks. So you have a pretty extensive packet in front of you. What the other handout that I passed was the letter from the Commissioners, Marion County Commissioners, talking about a specific position, a small farms and community food systems position that would be created for, with this district. So you also have a handout that talks about the various services that are in Marion County as well as in Salem. A lot of folks think that 4H and Extension is just for the rural area, and actually, we provide quite a bit of services to Salem, and so I'd highlight some of those services. I think with that, and given the time and the amount of things on the agenda, we'll stop and see if you have some questions for us.
Great, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Goodwin, I appreciate your time. We got to meet last week, I think it was, to talk about this, and like you just said, I definitely didn't realize how much 4H does. I just, you know, think about the fair with the, seeing the animals and such, which my kids love. But I'm definitely interested with Salem being the largest single taxing jurisdiction within Marion County that would be contributing to this, to the 4H taxing district. I mean, would it be too much to expect that maybe we get an annual report of some sort? Or, I mean, it doesn't need to be a big fancy presentation, but something about just what's going on inside of Salem, because that's $120,000 in compression that we eat the first year this goes in, and that's a police officer and some, and, you know, I think this has a lot of potential benefit in Salem, but I think, you know, I think as counsel, I would definitely be interested in what are we getting for that money that we're contributing as a community?
Yeah, I totally agree. That sounds like a great idea. We do provide presentations to, kind of key accomplishments to the county, and could certainly put that together for the city, as far as what is you're receiving for this. Be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Benards?
I can't leave this one, because I know it's too important. I don't know if John can answer it, because he and I had a conversation earlier about this. So what is the city of Salem going to get directly, staff time or effort from this funding? We're limited, just let the public know, we're limited by law to $10 per thousand on such value that we can take in revenue. And at this point, we're talking up to $0.05 per thousand would be going to this, the extension agency. And I want to make sure that it's being used wisely, because we're doing a little in cash, pots of money. So what kind of staff time are we going to be having for this that would directly help the city of Salem?
Well, I, with the staff, and then there's some issue about some numbers that I think Derek has, in terms of the leverage and the matching, or the additional federal and state dollars that come here because of this extension office being in this county. The positions that are being included include a Master Gardener Program position as well, these are faculty positions, as well as additional 4H and youth positions that would be created with this district. There's also agricultural position, one of the key ones that relates to Salem's economic development plan and agricultural impact on this community, would be the small farms and food systems position that would work with small-scale growers, but commercial growers, commercial but small in scale, dealing with food products that would come directly, be vended directly through the farmers' markets, also directly to food outlets such as restaurants, grocery stores. That market out there and that size and scale of agriculture has a tremendous potential, and we've seen in other adjoining areas where those positions exist, that the numbers and size and increased products being marketed are on the uptake, when we have a position that can be devoted directly to that. And the position that we're talking about here would be directly devoted to those smaller-scale farms that are direct marketing, and the bulk of their market around here is going to be the city of Salem, quite frankly. So that's the kind of thing that we're looking at.
We're having Norvac move into this community from nearby, and this is an important addition to this community. to this community. We have a lot of other things, organic fresh fingers. We have a lot of other businesses in this community. I can think of Outon Sunnyview, West Salem, so forth. What I'm looking for is somehow to connect, connect the farmer with the products that we have and value-added products that we come, that come out of our community. That's not just a grain, it's something that we make with the grain. And that's what I'm looking for, the connection, trying to get, to see if we can get that back into the community by the money that we're spending.
Well, absolutely. That position I was talking about would deal with the marketing of those products, would look at value-added aspects, the things that Rick Galpo talked about with Marion Food Share and the Better Burger. That, the Food Innovation Center, it's based in Portland, but it deals with the entire state. That kind of expertise and research-based information is made available here at the local level to create new products, new marketing ideas, give educational programs and marketing and direct marketing in particular, which obviously relates directly to the, to the farmers' markets, roadside stands, that kind of direct marketing. So, yes, we have, and the expertise may not be in that one position, but we have faculty in the surrounding counties that work as a team. We also have the expertise that's available on campus that comes directly out to the faculty, like when I, when I was working there, we get this research-based information, and the experts and the people that are doing the research come out and work with us out in the field and work with producers, in this case, small farmers, and work with the end-users as well.
If I can have a small follow-up. West Salem has been known as the wine gateway of the capital city, as we have so many wineries out in Polk County and Yam Hill. How is this, and I know that Jim Bernou, our first citizen, had, has, was one of the pioneers in this community, a value-added product. We're not just making grapes, we're making wine. How would this help that, that industry?
Well, we have two, if not three, viticulture and eunology specialists who are based on campus, and they work with the wine industry already. And I think having someone, if you're going to look at more direct marketing or that whole agritourism component that goes along with that, that's where it's not just the drinking the wine, it's the whole experience of coming out here and the food and the wine and being out in that rural area. That's, that's the experience that's being marketed. And we would bring expertise into that specific component. Agritourism is one of the things that's looked at quite heavily when you're looking at options and you've got a smaller-scale operation. So that's, that's one area that has been a component of these positions in other counties. So we can see that happening.
The main question I have is when people are going to say, why are you spending a nickel of that $10 to this when most of it's out in the county? Well, there's actually a great return to our community. We're not just industry, we're not just concrete and streets. We are a farming community as well.
I believe that wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Jim. Derek?
Okay, any further questions? I just want to remind you of, we met with the mayor. Remind you again, the mayor has tremendous interest in seeing if there can be assistance to developing a year-round farmers' market here in Salem. I just want to keep that in front of you. And I, she, she's unable to be here this evening, so I told her I'd take care of that. Any further? It's okay, yes.
Now, I'm just curious as to how we would potentially move ahead on that. There's some language that's suggested. Is the timing?
Let me, let me try this on, you see if this is a motion you would be interested in. Draft a resolution and a staff report in support of Marion County's Extension and 4-H Service District. In other words, have our staff develop. I think we need to at least get a look at the impact on compression, at the impact, I think, several of the things Counselor Benard's raised, but also kind of consolidating the information we've heard this evening, so we can take this up at the soon, at the, hopefully at the next meeting or very quickly. I assume that's what we're being asked to do at this point. Do you want to make a motion on that?
Oh, that's a beautiful motion.
No, sir.
Second.
I would so move.
Any discussion? Yes.
One bit of discussion, and maybe just some questions for staff when they come back with their motion for a presentation. But one would be, I'd be real interested in who does the taxing jurisdiction answer to? Is it a new board? Does it go to the Commissioners? How does that work? And then, I'm just kind of curious what happens if we say no, but all the rest of the cities say yes, or vice versa, or, you know, I'm just curious. So I don't need those answers right now, but maybe when staff makes a presentation, if we could answer those.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
And, you know, that will go out before the voters as well, so depending
Okay.
On who's in and who's out, that may actually move how the election rolls as well, so I'm sure we'll be kept up to date as we move along.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chair.
Who's saying that?
Could I be so bold as to?
Let me, let me, let me be bold for just a moment here. I discovered I was a little too bold on that public hearing and trying to move that one forward. I'd like to reopen the public hearing on the wireless communication fees. Okay?
Yep.
That's a motion.
That's my motion. Second. Nanki, second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, okay. Public hearings reopened. There is a glitch in the, apparently between our two ordinances, the one that we created for wireless communications and then this fee, and there would appear to be, if we held this until the 28th, a window in which companies could come roaring through and not pay any fees. There'd be about a 10-day or so opening, and I'd just soon not see that happen. The way these things were timed were unable, as I understand.
Yes. And Mr. Gross, do you want to talk about the effective date of the wireless ordinance?
Yes, the, when the council adopted the wireless ordinance, that set into play a series of events, and one of those events is the effective date of the ordinance, which is April 23rd. That was fine, as long as we got the fee schedule to you and, tonight, and you acted on it tonight, then the fees will be in place when the ordinance becomes effective. But if there, if you continue it to the 28th, we would have that period of time between April 23rd and a decision on the 28th, where we wouldn't have the fee schedule updated to reflect the new ordinance.
We don't, or we can have a motion to enact the fee structure as presented to us. Yes?
Can I ask a question of the staff? So if we, if we pass this, and then, you know, maybe someone who's not here tonight takes a look at it and says, hey, I've got a question, or we find sometime during the year, we need to adjust that, is that something we can revisit?
Yes, yes.
Okay, on the public hearing on, what's the number in this room?
4B.
4B. The Chair moves staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Clausen. Okay? Any discussion? Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, I know, there was a couple of us that had issues just with the wireless communication ordinance in and of itself. I have no such issue in regards to fees for appropriate land use type activities, so I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Okay. I do have issues with it, but I think we, I'd rather see them pay the fee than not pay the fee, as inadequate as I think it is. So why don't we vote? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes, okay. Annexation, management report on annexation policy.
Mr. Chair, if I can be so bold again, we still have a member sitting in here. If we could pull up item 10-2A regarding the marijuana subcommittee?
Without objection, sorry. Without objection, then we'll pull up 10-2A. Okay. Chair has a motion. I moved, I moved to form a council subcommittee of residents, industry stakeholders, and law enforcement officials to assist with the development of local regulations pertaining to the time, place, and manner of medical marijuana dispensary operations.
Second.
Second by Nanki. There is a substantial discussion of this. We've heard a great deal of this information. Mainly, this is to bring together representatives from the community, the council, industry, neighborhoods, Salem-Kaiser School District, it's really Salem Chamber of Commerce, the medical profession, to help us develop regulations for this. This is a new and, and sort of uncharted territory for us, so it'll give us a chance to maybe develop a model for some of the other cities when their one-year bans run out and they have to come to grips with this, so. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Now, take another run. We still haven't cleared the room.
Yes, annexation. And do we have a staff report, Mr. Gross?
We do have a short staff report, if you care to hear it.
Is there action required of us?
Yes.
We would like you to approve the policy guidelines, so that we have that guidance to prepare our staff reports for the upcoming hearings on annexations.
Yes.
Can I make a comment? Is there, is this time-sensitive? Just because with this being, I mean, it's a pretty legitimate policy statement for council. Is it appropriate if we delayed this till the rest of council is available with us?
That would not be a problem for staff if you wanted to do that.
Why don't we do that?
That's probably a good idea.
Okay, I like that idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
Do we need a motion, or are we just going to, the city manager?
It'd be good to have a motion.
I'd move that we delay this, it is a public hearing. No, no, recommend, delay this item until our next meeting, when more of the council is available for discussion.
Second. Second by Benard's. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, okay? Now, we're back to polls. Bennett pulls 3.2A. I'll move the staff recommendation. Second by Nanki. And I would like to have an explanation on kind of what's going on here. I read an article in the paper this morning that seemed pretty incomplete. I'd like to understand what's going on here.
Sure. John Wales from Urban Development. This staff report, for those that aren't, are watching at home, may look familiar to many of you here. This is actually the same rec of approval that, or a similar resolution that the Agency Board adopted two weeks ago. And what is it intended to do is to create a new objective, a land use, a land use reference, and a new project in the riverfront downtown or renewal area. And in the staff report, it explains that, and you may recall, that one of our conditions to close on the park parcel at the Pringle Square property is the creation of a, or the support to the Marquee Development, which is a acute rehab facility that's proposed on the North Block. And that we would, in that agreement, we said that we would produce a, as a condition to close, a project bond. What has happened is that we have met with bond council, we've met with finance, our own finance department, we've met internally, and the financing mechanism to provide that is quite complicated. The project bond is doable, we could, we could make it work, but we could also use a grant that would make it very simple and meet the same objective. And basically, in the article this morning, what was confusing was, I think, that it sounded like that we were swapping out a project bond for some type of, of a grant. The grant, as it's referenced in the staff report, is a performance grant. It comes only at the end of the project, just as the project bond repayment would. As the tax, as the project's completed and as the property taxes come into the urban renewal agency, a portion of those property taxes are given back to the development to help fill the financial gap. We're recommending to go with the, with the grant because, one, it's, it's cheaper to, to set up, it's less confusing, and it's much easier to manage over a period of time. But the article this morning in the paper wasn't clear that they're the same, that it's the same, same impact to the urban renewal agency. The grant is structured just like the project bond would be structured, it's just a different finance vehicle. And that's what the Agency Board adopted two weeks ago, and we're, because this is a major amendment to the urban renewal plan, it requires the council to approve it as well.
Any questions? Yes?
I guess the biggest and easiest question I could ask is, I know what a bond is, and I know what a grant is, and yet I'm hearing from you that you're saying literally it's just a different vehicle to do the same thing. Would not this grant have to be paid back, or would it not be?
This would be a grant. This is, the whole purpose of using a project bond, or in this case, a grant, is to fulfill a gap that this development has. It's about a $750,000 gap that the agency has agreed to consider in order to close on the park parcel. And so the, the bond is one process that we could use. We've looked at that. We're recommending not to use that, but to use a, basically a, a grant, a project grant, that would come in place at the end of the, at the project. It would function just like the bond repayment of a bond. The agency would be, under that scenario, would still be using tax increment that had been generated as a result to, to, in that case, repay the bond. This is just going to help the developer close that gap. It's the same, it's the same financial mechanism.
So you're saying either, either way, the urban renewal district is going to be paying back either the grant or the, or the bond?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to be paying back the grant versus the bond? The bond they have to pay back?
The grant, the grant is a, is a grant. It doesn't require repayment. The bond is, is a mechanism where there is a bond that's issued, it's held by Marquee, and they are the ones that are responsible for payment. And the way the project bond would work is that the agency, when it gets the tax increment, would give that tax increment to Marquee to repay that bond. So it's, it's the same financial mechanism.
They're paying for it.
They're, right.
No, no matter what. So the second question, and the natural thing would be, is if, if you don't go for a grant or the bond, if you don't help do this, which is one of the obligations, do we lose out on the purchase of the riverfront, the extension of the riverfront park?
Right, right now, there are two, or about three conditions to close in the purchase and sale agreement for the park, that the developer has required. One was the multiple-unit housing tax credit for the South Park apartment. The second was that we, it was identified as a project bond. We're recommending not to use a project bond, but use the grant instead. And the third is an agreement on how the development of the Creek Parcel, the area connecting the North and South Park, will be designed, administered, and funded. And that, that's still yet to be brought back to the council. I should add, this is just a plan amendment. This is to put the, this project into the urban renewal plan. When the project grant for this is, is ready, will be brought back to the Agency Board for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I got confused about repaying and not repaying. The project bond, when we said we were going to finance a project bond, meant we were going to pay for the bond in lieu of the developer paying for the bond, would have been how that would have gone, correct?
Correct.
So we would have been paying money that was not reimbursable.
The developer would have been issued the bond, and they would have been responsible, and that the urban renewal agency would be, as it collected the tax increment, would be issuing that to the developer to pay off that bond.
Right, so we would be funding the cost of the bond. Not providing a bond at no cost.
That's correct.
It's a key thing to, I just want to make sure we're clear about that. We would have been financing the cost of the bond. Second, and with the grants, basically, we're just giving them the money that would be, that would be in our benefit, repaid through the additional tax increment that is generated when the property goes forward, which wouldn't go forward without the grant.
That's correct. The developer will be going out and getting private financing, of which there'll be a gap, and they will have to identify, and they will identify that this agreement, grant agreement with the urban renewal agency will fill that, that gap.
And we pay last dollar?
We pay, we pay the, we pay after, only when the project performs, only when it's built, only that it's producing tax increment, and only that it's producing enough tax increment in order to make it. And any of our payments are subordinate to any or other debt that we have in the, in the URA.
Okay, I think that's a big piece for us, is that we're last dollar, there goes out.
It wasn't clear in the, in the newspaper article that that's what was, was happening. And so I think that's why, Counselor's questions.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Dickey, you have 3.3C. Councilor Dickey, you have 3.3C.
I have staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Menards.
So, I just, just to address this.
Do you want to give us a motion on that one?
I just did.
Did you?
Staff recommendation.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
I'm getting tired. It's now nine o'clock. It's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, so, I just wanted to highlight this. I don't know if you all noticed this in here, just because this is a really innovative way that we can help our law enforcement in dealing with some of the mental health calls that they go on. We have, as you all know, we have a really high mental health population in our community. And this grant actually provides a police officer to go out on a call when there's a mental health issue, as opposed to following up maybe at a later time. And so this is, has the potential for really helping maybe alleviate some of the, the mental health crimes that, that might result from that, as well as helping the people who are having the mental health issues in getting them, the help that they need, getting the services, and all of those things associated with that. So this is a really unique opportunity. It's a pilot program. It pays for an officer to be able to go on those calls. It also pays to retrofit a police car. I don't know if, I see the chief here, I don't know if he has anything else to add to that, but I just really wanted to highlight this, because I think this is just one of the ways that we can be innovative in working with our mental health population and providing some support to our law enforcement.
Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We have, I thought we moved E for, okay. 3.2G. 3.3G. I'll move staff recommendation. Second. Mr. Wales, can you bring us up to date on Ferry Street Southeast, the commercial lease? And maybe our, just look at our leases generally. These are our parking structure leases. I think this one is, has been long unused. Looks like it's.
Certainly.
Headed in the right direction.
Yes, this is a staff report with two leases for approximately 2,200 square feet in the 365 Ferry Street. For those that aren't familiar, that is the space, ground floor space under the Liberty Parquet directly across Ferry Street from the conference center. It's a space that we had remodeled several years ago, but have, for a variety of reasons, with the down economy, have not been successful in leasing it. And we've had many various uses, art shows, and over the years, using the space at, at a nominal cost. But tonight, before the council, are, is a proposal for two leases to divide the 2,200 square feet. One is for a gym and a fitness center. It's, it is being leased by 413 Industries LLC. The principal in that LLC is a gentleman named Brian Savage. And they will be going in to that space, and that the Electric Northwest LLC, the principal in that LLC is Jennifer Surf, will be building it out to operate a gallery and boutique. And our understanding, this is more of a online boutique service, where you, where the product is in the space, but a lot of the sales and marketing are done online. So we are very thrilled to, to be able to bring this up before you tonight. It's a space that has been vacant for, as Council Bennett said, for many years. It actually is the last space to lease within our, our parking structures. If, if this is approved and executed by the city manager, all of our spaces will be filled in both Chamecada and Liberty, which will, is a very good thing. And I think it's a very good thing for, to see that downtown is coming back as well.
Great. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Why don't we, I notice that we have our Neighborhood Partnership Program folks here. Would you like to give us your report? Or answer any questions council may have? Jessica?
If there are any questions. Good evening, council. My name is Jessica Price. I'm the city's Neighborhood Partnership Coordinator.
Well, Jessica, you've given us a report on Neighborhood Partnership Program, and we've received a series of emails on it, kind of what's going on out there? What is, what's happening?
So, the, the report just kind of gives an overview, some history of the program. It actually started in 1997. The city provides support to all of the neighborhood associations with the help of the neighborhood specialists. In addition to that, the city partners with two neighborhood areas on community building, specific types of work. And so, the report that you received just has kind of some history, the different areas that we've worked with, and then kind of the updates. We try and do a general status report update every year. And so just some, some highlights over the last year include kind of some changes in the areas that I've been working with. And so those include, the East Lancaster neighborhood area was selected when we first started this rotating model, so that every year, there's an opportunity for a neighborhood area to apply, kind of with outlining what their area's need is, who some of the ready and willing partners are, and then some of their goals that they hope to accomplish in the two years, with the two years of city support. So Elna was the first area that was selected on the rotating basis. When their two years came to an end, they reapplied. They were one of several groups that reapplied, but they did that with the intent of serving more of kind of the McKay High School feeder area. And so a new group was formed at that time, when the, when that group was selected, called Capes Community and Partners of East Salem. And so, since that happened, some North Lancaster neighbors joined up. And then meanwhile, Lansing, which received two years of support, when their two years came to an end, and the Edgewater area was selected, that Herm spoke about when he testified, some Lansing partners joined up, because actually, both of the schools in their neighborhood are part of the McKay feeder district as well. And so that Capes group has really, really grown. And then the original two partnership areas, Sessna and Highland, they have similar community groups that they've been working with since direct city support went away from those areas as well. So, the report that you received has some, some examples of different projects that we've done, community gardens, neighborhood celebrations, and crime prevention activities, and things like that.
So these, just to understand then, these neighborhoods where you complete your work kind of, there's a group left in place that actually continues the program without, and allows you, as the city catalyst, to move to the next place and?
That's correct. In all of the areas so far, there's still community work that's being done through the community partners that have been involved through the partnership.
And of course, if anyone had any comments on any of these, they're welcome to come down here, or contact you.
Absolutely.
And kind of go over their issues.
Yes.
So that's kind of what we're, make sure, okay? Great. Thank you for staying.
Thank you.
Are there any other information reports? Anyone wants to talk about? Okay. Ordinances, first reading.
I was distracted by a bubble suddenly appearing on my tablet for the first time.
Uh-oh. Do you want to make a motion on that, first reading?
Actually, I think it's read by city recorder and then?
Are you gonna read this?
Yes.
Okay.
Ordinance Bill number 4114, declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities within the city of Salem, and declaring an emergency.
Councilor Nanki.
Mr. Chair, I would move a similar motion that I had moments ago.
To October 27?
Which would be, yeah, but I have, the previous motion affects the, the first reading, which would again, I would move that we advance ordinance Bill number 41-14 to second reading on April 28th for enactment with the following change under Section 6. Duration that the moratorium is imposed by this ordinance shall be effective until October 27, 2014, unless rescinded sooner.
Second.
Motion on second.
Got a motion? Councilor Dickey seconds it?
Until the 28th.
You, you got it?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Second reading.
Here you go.
This is your first one.
Engrossed Ordinance Bill number 3113, relating to land use, creating new provisions, amending In Growth Ordinance Bill Number 3113, relating to land use, creating new provisions, amending